Welcome to the town act in Plano, Boivini for July 6th at 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'll stand for a pledge. I didn't want to put some of the alternates because we don't have any.
It's a good point, Chris.
And we're looking for an alternate right now.
We're not looking for one alternate, yeah.
Bones come across?
Uh, I don't even, I asked if it was posted and I don't know if it has been posted yet or not.
It was posted.
Yeah, so nobody's, nobody's inquired about it yet.
Did you guys get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June 15th as written.
A second.
All in favor? All opposed? Alright, we'll start tonight with the first public hearing. Matt Leck, Nathan Road, map 230, lot 005-002. Conditional use application for storage of rental equipment.
Uh, just give a, I guess, for everybody that's here for the public hearing, give a brief description of the project.
Uh, just, we have a small rental company, equipment rental. We're just looking to have a place to store it and, uh, that's really it.
Just a shed on the property and...
Yeah, maybe a small shed.
Yeah, just pretty much a pick up and drop off location, yeah?
Yeah. All of our actual business is online, so it's just a kind of a storage spot for picking and dropping off.
Any comments from the public? No? Alright, we'll close this public hearing for Matt Leck.
So Matt, with this one, since, um, Chris is gonna abstain from...
Abstain.
Abstain from voting on this one, we're gonna go through the conditional list next, next meeting. Um, and they'll probably come to their decisions then, but where no other, we don't have a quorum for your, and we really can't go for it, so you're welcome to leave.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next public hearing. James Wood, 111 Yaton Lane, map 233, lot 035. Conditional use for ground mounted solar array. How the public would, uh...
It's a residential solar system.
How big was it again?
I don't remember the exact dimensions. I think you have it on.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
What's the one I missed?
Sixteen panels, um, looking for, I had a plot plan in here somewhere.
It's on the very left page.
Plot plan, but it doesn't really give me the full dimensions of it. Dimensions, eighty-nine inches, so just under eight feet by forty, oh, that's for the panels. For personal use, correct?
Yes.
Ground mounted, so these ones are being put in with, um...
Screws?
Screws, augers, piles. It's last house on Yaton Lane?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, so it's pretty secluded. You can't see any from, you can't see it from the road and even from Yaton Lane, I don't think it'll be visible, correct?
I don't think any of the neighbors could see it, no.
You didn't go to the sidewalk down?
No.
Any questions from the public? No. We'll close this public hearing.
Then we're talking about him right now, right?
Yeah, what can I move forward with this one?
Yeah, so were you all on the sidewalk?
I was.
I was, yeah.
Chris was, Jason was.
Dave wasn't.
So it's got pretty good...
Yeah, you, so it's, you take, you go down like Yaton Lane, you go to, it's the last house on, you know, and then it's in a field, it's gonna be right up against the, the wood line. Um, so you'd actually have to probably pull into his driveway to actually see it, physically see it. Uh, you can't see it from 109, it's all, it's all wooded, um...
I don't even think you could see it from the beginning of his driveway to be honest.
Yeah, I know, um, and it's just, it's powering his personal, personal structure dwelling.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah, it's being placed in a field, so there's actually no cutting of any vegetation, um, gonna be going on, so, um... Kind of a description of it in... There is a map.
How long is it supposed to last?
Uh, they guarantee it for twenty-five years.
Yeah.
They should come and fix it and replace it.
For twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you, you, uh, was it, it should have it somewhere, but, that's all, I'm just...
Here it is. So it definitely has some size to it. It's like eight feet tall and sixty feet long or something.
I would say something like that. It's gonna be the same size as the one that I think was just installed, if not maybe a little bit smaller on, that's gonna be installed on the basement front.
Yeah.
I just need the first page, you can have that.
No, you can, um...
Just need the first one with a checklist on it.
Stationary one, it doesn't pivot.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
And there's no cement in the ground or any of that, it's just screws, it screws straight into the ground?
An auger system.
Right, correct.
Yeah, nice. And what do you think you'd, you'd do with it at the end of its lifetime?
Um, hopefully replace it. I don't know if I'll live that long, but hopefully replace it and, and, uh, if that's not a possibility, it's gonna be easy to install, it should be easy to uninstall and discard, so...
So we're gonna read through the, uh, conditions?
Yeah. Do you want me to read?
If you'd like to.
Um, using this?
Uh, yeah. It's all pretty much, I got it right here. They're all the same, right?
Uh, okay, A, the use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat.
True.
The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
N/A.
The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Traffic access to the sites, site meets standards contained in the ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with the performance standards of this ordinance.
N/A.
Uh, the site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. Um, adequate provision for disposal of all wastewater and solid waste have been made. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. So I guess yes. Uh, let's see, stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made.
You're gonna replant some, you know, where it's disturbed, what's, what's the terrain like now? Is it grass?
It's just grass.
So you, you keep it grassed?
Correct.
Yep, alright.
There's adequate water supply to meet the demands of proposed use and for fire protection purposes.
I would think so, you have a well, works pretty well.
Yes, sir, and we're very, very close to the fire department.
The provisions for buffer strips on, and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to the neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like. Yes. All performance standards in the ordinance applica, applicable to this, to the proposed use will be met.
Yes.
Archaeological and historic resources as designed in the comprehensive plan will be protected. Protected, so if you dig anything up. Hopefully not.
I was wondering if this was in the, um, flood zone?
No, he's up on it, he's, I can pull it up right now.
I know, I mean, he's right down by the river, oh, no, he's in...
Well, he's actually up high.
Okay, alright.
After his property, he starts to slope down.
Cool, alright. Well, I wasn't on the sidewalk, so...
Nope. Nope, he's high and dry. And this is the proposal, proposed area is right here. Oops, sorry, I didn't realize it was so far over.
What's the, uh, green RP or?
Um, just, uh...
That's not on his property.
No, it's not on his property, is there a wetland back there?
I think that's Ken, Ken Smith's property, down in there. That goes down into a valley down that way.
Oh, that's, so that's where the dam, there's that pond right there in the dam, and then there's a brook that goes across the street to this, right?
Yep, runs right down to the middle of that valley.
Yeah, whoa, my mouse is getting out.
Yeah, alright. Well, meets conditions, that's for sure. So was there anything on the sidewalk other than buffers that you thought of when you were there?
Not really.
Straightforward?
Yeah. He's from, like I said, you're not gonna see it from 109, you wouldn't even think, probably have to pull almost at least a quarter way into your driveway before you even saw it.
Yeah, 'cause it will be kinda down at an angle that you'd have to pull right in pretty good.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use for ground mounted solar array for James Wood, 111 Yaton Lane, map 233, lot 35.
A second?
All in favor? All opposed?
The next, uh, through the next meeting, you'll have something for you, um, your condition, you're good to have them schedule it or whatnot, but I'll have an actual, um, conditional use app, uh, permit for you. Okay, Chris will sign it once I draw it up and he'll sign it at the next meeting and you can come in and grab it. So the next meeting is on the, today's the sixth, so...
Twentieth or something?
Twentieth?
Yeah, twentieth.
So if you come in on the 21st, I should have something for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alright, new business. Mark Boise, 7999, lot 109, map 241, lot 006. Application for a subdivision amendment. How you doing?
Hi, my name's Steve Harding, I work for Sebago Tectonics representing, uh, Mark Boise tonight. Um, excuse me, the request before you is pretty straightforward. It's the, uh, separating of lots, lot two into lot two A and two B. Um, the lot right now is forty point oh-one acres and the, uh, proposed lots will be the one where the whole nine yards business is on, that's two A. That remains with Mark, that will be two A, and the one just below it on that screen would be two B. Uh, it's a pretty straightforward, uh, request. Uh, I think Jason's had Ben Smith take a look at it, um, from a planning consultant stage, and, uh, he didn't have any issues with it. Both lots have remained to have, um, all the dimensional standards that we need, and so it's, uh, it's a very straightforward request. When Mark does sell, sell the lot, um, two B, there'll be, uh, the new owner, I understand, will come in to you folks with an actual site plan application, so he'll get to look at that in more detail at some point in the future.
And I put a little memo in you guys' thing from, uh, I had received from some Ben. Um, he did a, just a preliminary, just review, it's not a formal, um, review, but it was, um, you know, we got this in and then I was on vacation, he was on, he's out on vacation now, so, uh, he just did a quick review and, uh, what it states is, I believe that the submission is complete in regards to the board, to what the board will need to review this application, which to, which is to simply split a lot within an existing subdivision. The new lots, two A and two B will be, will meet the dimensional standards for the commercial aid district, minimum lot size, frontage setbacks, and coverage. New development on either lot may be subject to site plan review with the board or additional permitting, and any such development will need to meet, uh, relevant standards at the time of submission. The application can't, uh, can't, the application can't consider or speculate on future development or future lot configurations, though on its own seems like a pretty straightforward review for the board. I will not be preparing, well, that's what I said, he was not preparing a formal comment. But as this moves forward, you know, he's just on vacation this week, so...
I'm not the subdivision agent for me, do you, are we required on the sidewalk for this?
So...
I think it's optional, but I keep, I don't have...
So the, uh, public, even the public hearing is optional, it says, it states that if the board would like to have, hold a public hearing, um, but what it does state is when you do create a new lot, it go, it kicks it back to preliminary planning. Uh, even though it's ready to move forward, it still goes back to that, that stage of preliminary. And it, I don't even think it stated if you, I think the sketch plan is when you kind of walk the site. This one's already been walked and, and looked at, um... I don't know if it was with you, with anybody from this board?
Yeah, no, I went on the sidewalk for the whole nine yards, but it's, it's not even really what we're talking about.
Right, it's a separate lot.
I mean, it's the same piece of land, but, and it looks like the building's gonna meet the setback from the sideline. They've got the proper road for an entry. I don't know what else can we do? Can you put the, um, commercial page, like the, the overlay? Fair, if we need a hearing, all better.
I can tell you what it is. It's easy to see him. I'm Mark Boise.
Do you wanna come up to the mic, please?
I, I can just tell you.
Yeah, just come up.
Well, there you go, you have it. It's on there now. I just figured if he couldn't find it, it just follows that jog, pretty much right across. Save some time.
Yeah, it's alright.
Like some little links in the middle of the property. Just need to say one more thing, that, that gray part, that building?
It's up here.
Yeah, it's, that's, that's an old picture.
Yeah.
And that building shouldn't be there, that was the original, when we thought we were gonna have the building there, and we had to move it, so...
It's up, that building's actually up in here, right?
Exactly.
Right?
Yep.
Right? So we're pretty much just back at preliminary, yeah?
Yeah, which is not much different than...
Starting to just, you're just going through the whole process again.
Yeah, I mean, it's just...
I think we are gonna have to schedule a sidewalk and, uh, I think so.
Would it make more sense to wait until the site plan process to do all that?
Probably, what's gonna be, what, um, changes are you gonna have?
So it's really a two-step process, what we're going through, what we were asking tonight was just to separate the, the lots in two, and then Mark's gonna sell it to another party. And then those folks will come in with a proposal to you folks, and I would think at that time it would make more sense to do a sidewalk in relation to that proposed plan versus going out there today and just looking at it, undeveloped wooded parcel.
Well, I'm just thinking about subdivisions in general, even simple ones, we pretty much would always do a sidewalk, just it's like kind of a protocol.
Where this is an amendment, though? So, back to Jason's.
But you're breaking off another parcel of land.
Yeah, so what it states in my, in our, uh, regulations, I mean, give me, written to the page, and this is where it kinda puts a wrench in things. Sorry. Procedure, an applicant for, an applicant for a review of previously approved plans shall at least, you know, whatever, um, let's get to, the revision involves the creation of additional lots or dwelling units. The procedure for preliminary plan approval shall be followed. If the revision involves only modifications to the approved plan, without the creation of additional lots or dwelling units, the procedure goes to final plan review.
Yes.
So because you guys are creating a new lot, it kicks it back to preliminary plan.
You mentioned a dwelling unit.
Yeah, but it says additional lots or dwelling units.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that is more intended to be for...
For residential subdivision, I get that, but...
See that that would be a...
No, I, I know, but where this is an additional lot, it's the same thing.
Is there any option for the board to waive, waive that?
That's what we're trying to look at right now, pretty much.
I mean, I, I, we, I completely understand where you're saying, 'cause I know there's a, there's a buyer already lined up.
Yes.
And they're, they will be coming in for site plan review.
Yeah, I didn't, no, what we wanted to do is queue that up at the first step so that they could purchase the land.
Yeah.
And then they would be able to come...
We can do it.
Come before this board and, and do it. And in doing the sidewalk, at that time, you're not, I know what you're trying to say.
Looks like you're probably gonna have to do us two sidewalks, you know, 'cause that, then we'll be, we'll change hands, there'll be a new owner, there'll be a new application and everything. As, as far as I can tell, I mean, I think we can get it done fairly quickly, though, if we just schedule the sidewalk today and...
Public hearing.
Yeah, get on with it.
Well, this has, you, this has to run twice, two weeks.
It says twice. This one wasn't changed.
Oh, really?
I didn't know it was in there. And we changed the ordinance for conditional uses and...
We're gonna change it across the board.
But if it's house, if it's considered housekeeping...
Are you talking about town meeting or...
Uh, just notifications. Yeah, there's one for town meeting and amendments, but I can have discussion with somebody else about that one, but...
We'll have to revisit that, um, I don't know, it's a...
What is your recommendation? Have the buyer lined up, I can understand.
I'm not, I, I can go either way with this one because it will come back in front of us really soon, but if I was following the procedure, I, I don't know.
I think we should just, you know, do it fairly quickly so it's not pulled anything out for...
So just do everything next week, next meeting?
We could, yeah, whatever the time, time schedule allows us to do. I don't know.
Because it would put me into the first meeting in August. And it would be, it could be possibly wrapped up by then.
It would be the third.
The third of August.
Yeah, well, we're not really supposed to be taking into account what's gonna happen after they divide. We're just looking at this one parcel that's getting divided in half, that's all we care about right now.
So then do a sidewalk and I'll schedule this public hearing for the third, and then they can be on their way possibly if everything goes well.
Yeah, schedule the hearing now so it expedites out for them. I mean, 'cause it seems straightforward, but I mean, I just remember, do we, we did this with Joe Stanley a couple times.
Yeah, no.
So do a sidewalk on the 20th? And then...
At like five o'clock?
Yeah.
Or you just do it before the public hearing? Then you know what you're doing.
Good, but...
Yeah, I'm either way, I'm good either way, I don't, you're the, I'm just following you guys on this one.
No, I think it's good to have a little bit of time in between them in case there is some information that comes up that, it's unforeseen, you know, at the sidewalk, that maybe the butter is there and something. And I don't wanna get jammed into a public hearing with, when I'm not prepared.
It sounds like the board wants to do a sidewalk, the third, uh, the 20th, five?
You know, what Gavin recommends, yeah.
20th at five for a sidewalk, and then the third with a public hearing, and followed with, hopefully we'll have everything wrapped up on that night.
Okay. And when you wrap it up, will you be able to sign them, drawings?
This is pretty much ready to go right now.
Yeah, I need a copy that's...
Changes that we...
We'll need a copy that's not folded because the registry deeds will not take that. Alright. Somebody, we gave them a perfectly good copy and they folded and brought it and then they...
Yeah, I, I didn't realize, yeah, we should have gotten...
Well, that's alright, there might be some minor change we haven't thought of.
Can you give that to me again, the process?
Do we wanna review? Are you all interested in reviewing any of these documents? Are you all interested in reviewing any of these documents that they provided last time? The soil survey, the hydrologic assessment with from high impact plant phosphorus? You still have that information from the previous subdivision?
Yeah, I think we could find it. Really didn't want to go through the.
Yeah, I have some stuff. I don't know how many copies of it I have, but I can look through it briefly or look through it and see if I can, what I can come up with and then I'll be in contact with you about it.
Okay, we probably have it. Wave of requests right now.
Yeah.
So if we already have the information, that makes it simpler. We don't have deal with, deal with as many waiver requests. We can review the.
Okay.
And we got the soil types right on there.
Yeah, a lot of the information is right on the plan itself.
Yeah.
What we left with road frontage on the, on lot B?
I believe it is
One thirty?
Two hundred and fifty feet. It's one thirty-eight, thirty, one thirty-three, thirty-eight plus the one sixteen, sixty-two, which I think comes out to two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, and then three hundred on, on the remaining parcel?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're right on what they need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go through the stuff, um, in the next few days and then I'll be in touch.
And we could look at it, look forward on our end. Um, we orig, we just purchased.
You guys originally did the, the.
Corner Post did the original survey, but we've purchased Corner Post, so, uh, and sometimes we can find things like that, so. We'll certainly look for it.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so, so I don't know if you guys, if Mark, you want to be present for the site walk?
Do I have to be?
No.
Someone does.
Yeah, usually there's a representative there.
Yeah.
Five o'clock on the twentieth. It'll be fast.
And then we'll probably discuss it somewhat that night. Probably for ten minutes or something.
Yeah, just talk about, yeah, I guess, so.
May not be much to say, but.
Is it, um, your, is it flagged, staked out a flag or anything like that?
Um, we could probably stake the corners. Not something, you know, there's nothing proposed on the lot itself, so it's, it's not like a building or roadway or something we could stake out.
And that's, that one's fine with DOT entrance probably because it's up the road further that you have to worry about the curve?
Yeah, I believe so.
There is like a culvert there, isn't there, right now? Like the culvert they dumped seeing on top of, but it wasn't like.
That was originally where we were gonna have the entrance for that building is right there.
Is that pretty much the entrance to the new law?
No, not necessarily. I just went over there. I haven't pulled it yet.
Is, but that is on the new law?
It is.
Okay, just for my own.
All right.
Yeah, I think that's, that's all I'm doing for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, can I get this other one back though, so I can put that in the folder for him?
We've got another piece of that.
Take my subdivision.
I think it's. Thank you. Come up with anything else in.
Come engage in my subdivision.
Oh, yeah, my bearing that in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it was just, I think it's pretty, it was just like a regular, yeah, I think.
All right, let's move on. Keep on going. Come on.
All right, next up Scott McCloud, Luna Ridge Subdivision, Youngs Ridge Road and Priscilla Lane, map one, three, eight, lot zero, zero, eight. Application for a subdivision amendment.
Yes, good evening, Scott McCloud, Ashco Construction. How you doing tonight? Good, good. So, um, I just recently purchased the property subdivision. Uh, the only thing I'm looking to have done is, uh, remove the fifty-five and older from the plan. No, no other changes, not changing laws, not asking to deviate from anything there, just strike that from the plan. And in this, when this was approved back in oh-five, there was, uh, from my understanding, I know, I know about the growth permit situation and how booming Acton was back then and even had people sitting here sleeping for a building permit at the time and that was why, you know, that was a way to get out of it with doing the fifty-five and older. Having this a fifty-five and older subdivision enacted and it's taken so many years to sell that off. I don't, I don't want to fall into that category myself if at all possible. I'd like to try to let some young kids that, you know, my kids went to school in Acton, so open it up to some of these kids and.
So, um, as you, Acton still has the growth ordinance, um, it's still enacted with an, with an Acton, so it allows, it makes it so that the, the schools don't get overburdened, um, as well as the, um, you know, we have, we still have adequate fire support as well as police. So no matter what, you know, there's, and there's something in the ordinance that contractor can only do so many growth permits a year for himself, for themselves. Scott, it'd be, it would be a miracle if Scott got all thirteen houses up in one year.
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't do it.
And I had, I had, I had conversation with the previous owner about why he, what, with, um, why they went with the fifty-five and up and it concurs exactly what Scott just said. It was, it was a way, it was, it was a way to be exempt from any kind of growth permits and stuff like that. And so they, they had found a loophole and they, they ran with it.
The road is in, the drainage is in, the underground power is in, just to, so you understand where, where the property's at and it's virtually kind of been grown in and sitting idle for all these years.
So what did you think of Ben's comments? Jason?
Uh, when it comes to the net density, residential density calculations.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at now, and they got the box on there. General Purpose District, what do we?
Right, well, so General Purpose is our rural district and those, nothing had changed from those, uh, just the name.
What year was this?
Oh, five, I believe.
Yes, oh, five. November of oh-five. At least that's what was signed and approved.
Yeah.
So, um, for General Purpose back then, you had ninety thousand square feet was your lot, which was, it's an acre and a half? Uh, it's two acres.
It's two acres.
It's two acres, so two hundred and fifty road free, yeah, so it all, the, it's just, it's not called General Purpose anymore.
Right, I just want to make sure we don't, that there's nothing strange where the zoning districts have changed since the thing's approved or we're noodling with that, I mean.
Um, so with, going back to the subdivision regulations, like I just said, um, it really states that, you know, um, I understand where, where Ben is hinting on that, but finally says that we're not supposed to jump into anything else other than what the scope, so scope of review of the board. Scope of review shall be limited to those portions of the plan which are proposed to be changed.
Exactly.
So it's really, we're looking at the one amendment right now. Not, and this is a cluster subdivision, so they still have all the open space acreage that makes up the fifty percent of the, of the other stuff and, and those lines aren't changing. It's just the amount, the, even the lot lines aren't changing. It's just an amendment of.
Are we gonna have a presenter with a plan that shows the open space on it?
It is on there.
It's on here?
Yeah, yeah, it's all open space. We have open space here. This is all open space. Um, there's also open space, this here, and it follows all the way around.
How, and this is the, the lot, it looks like that, yeah?
That is a lot. It's, it's right next to the Horn Pond Boat Launch. It's not far from it.
Is, is the whole lot depicted on this drawing?
Yes. Yeah, it's on here, Gavin, if you look on the computer screen. So you have all your open space right here.
Yeah, no, I just want, because sometimes it's just that, that could be just the actual, you know, broken down development and the, the lot could be larger than what we see. That's the whole lot and that's where we go.
Yeah, so the open space is still, um, thirty-four point three acres here.
That's the whole lot.
That's the whole lot?
Yeah.
Total area to be surveyed, yeah, okay.
So there's eleven point three acres there and then there's some on the other end.
And you got.
Which we assume ends up being half of the thirty-four acres, pretty much.
I think the point is it's not.
Well, yeah, it's fifty percent of, it's cluster, um, so it's supposed to be about six fifty percent of what is there or something like that.
So the open space over there is acre and a half?
So acre and a half, you have, and then you have here, and then you have this here.
So it's not half of the thirty-four?
No.
Okay.
That's the point.
Yeah, right, right. I'm just trying to threshold it out.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, good.
So as far as the depography is concerned and elevations, the open space area? So this is on hill, right? If I'm in the right place?
They have all drainage, so these dark gray areas here, here, and here is drainage. Um, if, when you actually walk, if you walk the property, there's a giant, um, culvert that goes right from here to there, correct?
Yeah.
This is up high and then it drops off down towards the lake.
That was my question.
Yeah, yeah. And obviously when the houses are built, there'll be some kind of stormwater plans to make sure that it stays up there.
So do we have to start over again or am I?
No, no, this is, this goes to final plan.
Yeah.
You're at the, you're at the final steps, pretty much, um.
I'm just trying to figure out if there's any difference between a fifty-five plus community and a cluster subdivision if for some reason the fifty-five was a little bit less stringent on the open space and we're converting to a cluster and, and should we take, you know, just how we should view that? I'm just trying to figure that out right now. Because the lots are smaller than the two acres, so it's, it is a cluster.
Yeah, it was based on the zoning at the time.
Yeah. But if you look at the zoning at the time, what did it say about clusters as opposed to fifty-five plus?
The fifty-five and older is, I had Dana from Corner Post look at this as well, but before he retired fully. And the, um, there was no, the, the, literally the fifty-five and older was to get by the, uh, the growth ordinance that was the only, the only thing that it gave you for, at the time. Lot sizes were the same requirements for either subdivision. There was no, there was no different lot size. They didn't, they didn't get any bonus for having fifty-five and older, is what his findings were. And then looking at the zoning, the requirements for where we're at. Making the revision where we're just looking to remove that and change nothing on the plan whatsoever.
So the subdivision requirements that you had to go through did not differ at all from what we have now?
Nothing I know of. Um, I also didn't dig into it as deep as, as that, really.
I think all that was, we talked about it, was all that, it was like the growth, where you talked about Cambridge, but then everybody was in a panic years ago because Eagle Streets was coming in.
Right. I know it's kind of contradicts itself, but like I said, I had a conversation with a seller, um, who was also one of, there was two owners to this, but he was, he's also the land use attorney for the town. And he was the one who told me that when, you know, I was like, so why, you know, how did, you know, what was the whole, because I had talked to Scott about the growth ordinance and he says that was the way to get away from that, that aspect of it. Go to fifty-five and older and you didn't have to, you didn't have to worry about the growth permits. Because at that time, like Scott even said, um, you had people lined up on January first that were, they were there. You know, September thirty-first camping out overnight, um, looking for growth permits.
They're actually, they're having Christmas.
Yeah, there was. It was crazy.
So there's no difference?
Not to my knowledge, um.
I mean, what they have to go through?
Well, it's a cluster, yeah, so. The difference between this and a normal subdivision is the fact that it's got open space. Most subdivisions that don't have open space follow every lot meets dimensional standards. So this one doesn't, but then they have the open space that makes up for, um, the lot, the, the smaller lots. And nothing can be done with that. That open space can't be, um, sold off. It remains with the, the subdivision.
So all the subdivision requirements are the same? It's just a technicality for things?
With a loophole.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's the difference between a regular subdivision and a cluster subdivision. And when, when a cluster subdivision is proposed, they have to show us this map that demonstrates that they can actually fit all those lots with the normal two acre dimensions in the lot somehow. And they, you know, that, that, we go on that map, you know, as to whether or not we would allow a cluster. They have to build, you know, they need the dimensional requirements to be met generally before we can shrink them down to the cluster, if that makes sense. It's right in here.
Yeah.
So, which we don't have that map in front of us, but it would just, it would, how many lots is it?
Thirteen.
So it would show that, you know, that you could fit these thirteen lots in a traditional manner in this same lot. And then if they can't do it like that, then that limits the size of their cluster.
So I think you have a couple lots in here that do conform to the two acres. And, yeah, you have two, at least two of them here.
Right, well, it should be in the original application, there should be a map that demonstrates that. Just look at that.
Is it forty-four thousand or forty-three something?
Forty-three, five, six.
Yeah, so three lots do conform to the actual two acres.
And they have the proper road frontage and the two fifty?
Yeah.
Three, five and seven?
Yeah, three, five and seven are two acre lots with the road frontage and, um, so they don't have the, well, this one does, two eighty and then two hundred. Um, this one, I don't see it, but if I. This one, I don't see it, but if I was to grab my ruler, I could.
So how, how and why Dana did that research for me to find out about the zoning was if you looked towards the beginning of the subdivision on the left-hand side, this calls off for tennis courts. And I looked at the size of that lot, then I looked at the, the map and I showed, it showed that there was, at the time, a 14th lot by square footages that would have worked. If I, so you could add 14 lots instead of 13. And so Dana went back, pulled up all the, you know, the past ordinance and the current ordinance and said, no, if you change that, you gotta bring it to the current standards and the current ordinance, which then you would have less lots. If, if we were making any changes in that subdivision, and that's why I said, well, I'm not gonna change anything. I did have a conversation, I asked the fire chief about sprinklers and he said that was a solid, it's staying, so I said, well, I'm not gonna revisit that, so. Just narrowed it down to just asking to lose the 55 and older and move forward with the subdivision.
Get rid of the old people.
I'm one of the 55 and older now, this, this year.
Forget any else, the data act and.
You're not far behind.
Hey, if I make it, I'll be lucky.
Are you involved with that lot across the street, I mean, are there any?
That's, no, that's not, that seems unrelated, so, yeah.
Unrelated, so there's no water rights or anything like that that go with this subdivision?
No.
I mean, the open space goes down to.
Horn Pond.
Horn Pond.
Yeah, they do have water rights 100% right here.
Yeah.
Uh, this, they have, there's a walking trail, which I actually did walk this trail. It was in the winter time, but.
Yeah, it's, it's still there, the previous owners, I think they walk it every day with the dogs.
Yeah. But there's no, there, no, you know, building down there. I think they're gonna be, there's gonna be, well, at the time, they were gonna have racks for kayaks and stuff like that, but that was pretty much it.
I think I'd like to see a little bit more of the original application, just to, I know we're not supposed to tinker with it, but I'm curious because we're not coming up with the 50% of the lot as open space that the ordinance calls for, for a cluster subdivision. I'm just wondering if that was, that was changed because it was a 55 plus.
Did you want, Gavin?
Well, I'm just looking in the.
What page is that?
Subdivision regulations.
Well, this is.
Forty and 41.
The problem with that too though Gavin, is this is amended in March of 2018, I don't even know when this was written. You know what I mean? So it might not have had that standard back then.
Right, which is, which is what Ben was questioning.
Right, but then.
How do we resolve that?
Well, I, I can't because I'm going back to Article 8 revisions to approve plans and.
Yeah, so that was just gonna say.
Just.
Scope of review.
Back to that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And it says, yeah, the board's scope of the review shall be limited to the portions of the plan which are proposed to be changed, so. It's, in my, to me, that's, I find that to be kind of cut and dry, we're dealing with, do we want to eliminate the 55 and older or leave it the way it is? Well, that's the board, let's put it that way. And in my personal opinion, where we still have the growth ordinance, that protects against any kind of, you know, overdevelopment.
I don't know. He can leave it three a year?
Huh?
How many can he get per year?
Uh, it's like four or something like that.
I was gonna say, I see a three or four. Where are you at now on account?
Not over, we're not in double digits yet, it's been a slow, it's been a slow year.
Yeah.
I think eight, is it?
No, we're.
And the town has how many?
Oh, 12, I guess we are a little over, so we're at 12.
How many do you have total?
35.
Yeah, so.
So there really aren't any concerns as far as the, the growth?
Not from my, from my standpoint, no.
Any, any other concerns?
Any other concerns? Um, no, he's keeping, he's not, he's not trying to amend the sprinklers, he's keeping the open space. A lot of the infrastructure, roads, I mean, they'll be maintained a little bit more, but a lot of that's there, a lot of the drainage is already ready, some of it's there and ready to go. My biggest thing will be stormwater with the, those houses being right there, making sure that stays up at that level. But it will because there's a lot of, when I walked it, there's a lot of ledge up there.
There's a lot of boulders, boulders like gravel, so it'll be easy to mitigate the water within the lots.
So maybe I missed it, but what are the septic designs?
Well, the, what I, they had perk tests, but there's no septic designs. There's no designs? There's perk tests on it and I, as you can see on the plan, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah, they're all over it.
So those designs will come in as needed with the builds. They're far enough away from the water, so it's not, you're not looking at any kind of treatment system, it's just gonna be a normal, whatever they want, stone and pipe or, or chambers, however they want to design it.
So that's not a concern?
No. No.
Is it pretty much cleared? Are there any trees up there or?
This, this tree's all through the property, the lots have, will be cleared for building the houses, but this tree's through the whole place. The road's there and in, the tees are all in, all the drainage is in, the culverts are in, the, the guardrails are in, it's, it's just, it was brought to that stage and then left sitting dormant. Just last year, they ran the conduit and the, the transformer pads were all there, but just last year, they ran wire in them and set a pole.
I mean, I, I just have that one, you know, one question about, you know, how, how, you know, it doesn't actually work as a cluster subdivision in terms of the regulations, but if we're not, if we're not caring about that.
If you guys want to push this to the next one, I can get some information on it.
Well, I, I mean, what, we would just be seeing what the regulations said at that time it was approved, is that, how would we figure it out?
So I think it's beyond us.
You know, I'd have to go back, I'd have to dig through the other stuff or go back into the old zoning ordinances and see if there's even something in there for it, but.
I mean, as, as you said, it's cut and dry as far as the ordinance currently, in my opinion, I mean, I'm, I'll be in pushy.
So unfortunately, like, I don't, in my opinion, and you can take it with a grain of salt if you want to, this was approved in the standards of 2005. I can't, I'm not, I don't think we should be going back into the whole cluster subdivision and, and land stuff. And I, I can, I can figure out, I can talk to Ben.
Do we have any verbiage about the 55?
Not in our ordinance.
Was it in the ordinance in 2005? Where was it in 2005 that they, that they referenced in order to create this thing?
It's, it's probably subdivision law, maybe, I'll have to find out, I'll speak with, like, if you guys want to table this to the next meeting, I'll speak with Ben.
I don't know, I mean, it's up to the, the board, I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we don't overlook something.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to Ben, he's just on vacation this week and I'll have an answer for everybody for the next one, because he definitely knows subdivision law a lot better than I know it.
I think that's a safe thing to do.
You know?
And who's Ben, just to.
Ben Smith, he's.
Consultant.
He's one of my consultants, I deal with North Star Planning. I'll, I'll include you in the emails.
Okay. Yeah, if you could just ask him where, where the verbiage is pertaining to 55 plus communities.
So I actually had him review this briefly, and if he wasn't on vacation, he would have been here tonight, but.
So, in, in the restrictions and covenants and conditions, it talks about the 55 and older.
That's it?
Plan right there? That's the whole. Oh, that's, that's the, for this project.
Yes.
Way back when.
Yes.
East Lauton Moon Ridge shall be owned and occupied by no more than two adults, at least one of whom shall be no less than 55 years of age.
Same as Eagle Street, Trace.
That's what I was thinking in there, is that they were allowed to reduce lot size in there too, but I don't, I don't think it was necessarily a cluster. But I guess it is a cluster.
Yeah, they typically do that, I think, I'm not sure if Dana did that one too, but that's.
They're chucking warehouses in there.
I know, I know, that's kind of, I mean.
It just doesn't, it doesn't go, it's just, it's just one of the covenants, it's not, it's not talking about.
The ordinance.
It's just talking, it's just, this is, this is the rules, if you want to live here, this is what you have to do. No tents, there was, you know.
Right, right.
No structure of temporary, no structure of temporary character, trailers, mobile homes, tents, shacks, garage, barn or other outbuildings shall be used as a residence, you know, it just tells you what you can do. I mean, I live in a sub, an old subdivision, it tells me you're not allowed to have four-wheelers. I can tell you that's not working out.
Yeah.
I don't think I've ever seen any of them down that.
No, it's pretty gravel.
So it's up to you guys, if you guys want me to just reach out and get a little bit more information. It's, I don't think it's a bad idea, it's not, you know, you're not planning on building tomorrow, right?
Nope, just looking to start planning and figuring out what I'm gonna do.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, obviously, sooner the better, but I mean, it is what it is, it's.
This is only gonna be, you know, just two weeks, I'll have an answer for you by the next meeting, that's the thing for the board. And it'll just, it'll, it'll probably make these guys sleep better at night, so.
Yeah, no, I'm not looking to put anyone's neck on the line, so to speak.
You're probably young.
I did run it, a gentleman from Saba Gotox, they prepared these for me, they did look through it as well, and they thought it was very straightforward and simple, they actually asked if I want a representation here and I said I felt like it was straightforward enough that I didn't need it, it was good. So they amended those plans and sent in.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is straightforward, just, I mean, curious why about that 50%? And if, if that was the standard when this thing was approved and they just, you know, varied it because it was a 55 or?
The standard changed, I believe Dana said in, I think, 2018 or something like that.
So the standard was different before then?
Before, you're right, they changed it.
Probably nothing has been, yeah. If it doesn't hold you up, we might as well double check it before we sign off.
So, yeah, we'll just table it till the next meeting and I'll get some answers and I'll include you in the emails.
Yeah, when is the next?
20th.
And at that point, if it's all good, then sign off. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Gavin, so let's get some questions straight here, so I actually. What do we want to ask?
Ask Ben Smith.
Yeah.
Chapters.
Yeah, but we have to know what it, what it was.
So back in, I mean.
When, when the original approval was granted, did this conform to the standards of a cluster subdivision?
And did some of the covenants that they put, such as maybe less than, or they allowed for less than 50%, did that have to do with the age? Because there weren't gonna be that many people there, two people per household, et cetera. Is that why they reduced the lot size? They allowed it?
No, because anybody can file for a cluster subdivision, age doesn't matter.
And the weird thing is the only.
It's just gotta be set up properly with.
No, did the age, did the 55 and older, because of the restriction for, you know, like two people per household, the effect on the environment, is that why they allowed that less than 50%?
Yeah, I mean, I, he might just say.
They have bearing on it.
Didn't exist at that time.
How old Robert De Niro, he's gonna be like 80, he just had a kid. He'd be living in there.
Does that make sense to you? Does that make sense for saying?
Yeah, it does to me, that the 55 and older was added, put in place to reduce the open acreage to less than 50% of the overall acreage.
So if, if in 2005, they'd taken the 55 off then, what would have happened to the conditions?
55 or you're not.
Would their approval for a cluster have been slightly different?
So, okay, so what I had.
I don't know if we can get all.
Did the 55 and older get put in place to reduce the 50% of open acreage?
Sure, I mean, that's.
That's kind of what you're trying to.
That's pretty much the.
Right?
Yeah, is there a difference, that's what we want to know.
Because the open space now is not.
Right, right now, they've only got 11, 12, 13 acres and they need, they're supposed to have 17 or something like that. I mean, it's close, but it's not the full. I don't know, I mean.
I'm gonna also ask him if I, were we even allowed to open that cannon worms up?
I don't, yeah, he's probably just gonna say we don't even worry about.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask him for an explanation, but then I'm also gonna ask him, is this something according to our regulations, are we even allowed to open up that cannon worms?
I'm just thinking, if it was 2006 and they came back and he said, I'm not gonna be doing the 55 plus, I'm bringing it back to you, would they, would they say, okay, you need to adjust your acreage?
Yeah.
Or not? But maybe we can't actually get that information.
Really, is it a change? Is this considered a change? It's really what the question is.
Yeah. Because I feel like it.
Because there is a distinction, if, if that's a loophole, you know.
Well, it was for the, like, it was for the, as far as I know.
For the growth.
It was for the growth, and that was the only one.
Yeah.
That's, that was from.
You don't know that.
That was from, that was from the seller and, you know, and I'm not discrediting anybody, sometimes stuff doesn't get interpreted.
I do remember, that's the weird part.
And I don't think he would do that, but from my understanding, that was the only reason why, is so that they didn't have to get a growth, get come in for growth permits. They hadn't, he never touched base on it being anything to do with open space or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, I'll ask the questions, he, he was fine with coming back anyway, wasn't, he wasn't pushing.
Right, exactly.
So it's, it's, it's good to have some information that we didn't have before and even if we can't use it, or you guys can't use it, it's still nice to have some knowledge, so.
All right.
So on my upcoming agenda, I don't really have anything else other than the two subdivisions here that we're dealing with, one's a sidewalk and he's probably, they're not coming in after, so right now, it's just unless something comes in.
Well, one of them is gonna come in on the, for the whole nine yard subdivision.
Right.
I'm gonna come in, well, we can't even.
Oh, we got Matt Lex, we're gonna do the conditions for storage of equipment.
Yeah.
And then, we'll do the sidewalk, I don't know, do you think they're gonna come in after?
Well, I'm just saying, if they don't come in, we can't discuss it. But I don't know what we're gonna need to discuss, but, I mean, there's potential that we, I don't know.
Yeah, so we could tell him to come in and, you know, when we're at the sidewalk, I don't know if he's gonna bring his representation, I'm not too sure.
Right, right, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward, but.
And you'll still have a public hearing and discussion afterward.
We'll get out the notices tomorrow.
Right, yeah, I think it makes sense, just go ahead and schedule a public hearing now, just to help expedite it.
And I wanted the, the public hearing with this one. And I wanted the, the public hearing with this one anyway, because, um, it's a lot line. Uh, they're making a, creating a new lot. And it seems right to do that, and so it's, you know. I know they thought that it was, it was gonna go right till, you know, it was cut and dry, final, but I don't think that's how, it's not.
No, that's not what we usually do.
So, no, I think you handled it correctly.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll get out the notice of public hearing, notice of sidewalk, and the Butters list, which I don't know if there's any. Butters, but.
There is one, I'm wrong, but.
Well, there's people in the back there who's talking in the back.
The wedding barn? I'm not saying that.
Well, it's five hundred, Butters are five hundred feet, so. You have this one right here.
That, I don't, I think that's that.
I don't think that's gonna be five hundred feet.
That dirt road that leads back, right? Something's back there or not. So this one's when you first drive away, then you have this one, like that dirt road that they've been building on for.
I think that's that wedding barn, right?
Way over here.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If I went on a sidewalk in there years ago.
Gotta keep building up on the road every.
Right.
Haven't seen anyone go in there, out of there. Dave's been in there sneaking back there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big project.
Big project.
Can take a little while. All right, yeah, yeah, I mean, sometimes the Butters say something that we need to take into account, but.
What is that?
That's a resource protection zone right here.
Mm-hmm.
But that, that lot's already developed as of right now. It just shows the commercial zone. But, um, yeah, so right now we have, um, sidewalk at five. And then Matt Leck and his storage units, and then this, the remainder of this with some answers from Ben Smith.
No, it's storage of equipment, right?
Storage of equipment, thank you.
That made me, just made me think I drove by in Mountain Mills, that guy with the storage units is, oh, he's got an excavator, he's doing it.
Uh, he's coming back, actually. He said he'll be, um, for the, for the storage units, he should be back here within the next couple weeks. Well, all new with everything, and I've already told him that everything starts, it's all new right now, too much time's passed.
Yeah.
Um.
He was working on that today.
Yeah, he's doing a septic system over there, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We should do a sidewalk.
Hopefully he's out of that.
The RP, yeah.
Those waters, yeah.
I think he's kind of right up on top of that nub, but it was close because it was the rear and the side.
Right.
Yeah, that'd be worth doing, getting Minion doing a sidewalk, but it sounds like that's happening, so.
Yeah, it's, um.
Might want to drive down there sometime.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I've just been.
I don't know.
I've been swamped.
Busy, yeah, this time of year, right?
Well, I just, I took a couple days off last week and then came into a big old storm.
Yeah.
Um, everything at once.
Go down there at lunchtime, get lunch at Iron Mills.
They do have good lunch.
They do.
Um, I think I'll just stop by your house and have your leftovers.
Yeah, there's not much.
No, there's too many kids running around. There.
Make motion, we'll be here.
Second.
All opposed. All right, thank you, bro.